What? Okay, well, don't move it.
Good evening. It's six o'clock by my watch, so we're gonna go ahead and get started with this work session for the Prattville City Council. I want to thank everyone who came down. This is, this is, I always have a lot of anxiety worrying about, is the room big enough, or too small, or too little, so I'm pleased to see the turnout, but I'm glad we're not having, folks having to stand and not have chairs, at least so far. But I just want to say thank you for coming out. I also appreciate the city staff being here, the department heads and others for coming, and they are on the front row, and there's a reason for that, obviously, if we have questions that we need to pose to them. We are here, basically, to discuss the budget that the mayor presented at this past council meeting, introduce that budget. As you know, the introduction of the budget doesn't mean that it's final by any means. We are having this work session tonight for we, the council, to discuss it further, to clarify questions, to work through issues, to kind of hammer out details. And then, this coming Thursday at six o'clock, we will have a public hearing. The public hearing will be over in the regular council chambers over at City Hall. For tonight's meeting, although the public is invited to observe, they are not participants in the meeting. Therefore, you are here just to listen, to watch, and hopefully, that will help you if you, if you want to come and pose questions on Thursday night at the public hearing, or to do so with either the mayor or your councilperson prior to then, that would be, that would be fine. But for tonight, I just want to remind everybody that this is not an operation that the public actually participates in. So with that, I am gonna say welcome again to our newest member, District One, Councilman Striplin, and I would ask the mayor if he wants to make any introductory remarks.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, because I know this is very important to the community, because we all live here and work here, and I know it's as dear to my heart as it is yours. But I also want to thank all the department heads for all the work that they have put into this. I know it's been a very trying time for all this, but it's, once they, I think, recognize the issues that we had, the department heads have really stepped up to the plate and done a very, very much a human's job. Also Doug Mosley and Lisa Thrash have been outstanding here helping with this. But as reported earlier, some components of my budget include an increase in our wastewater fees. The whole plan on that is, at this point in time, to have a $10 surcharge added on to it until we can do a, a cost analysis on it. It'll take approximately three to four months to get that back and determine exactly how we need to spread that charge around. Right now, it's $10 per entity, household, industrial, commercial, whatever, but that can greatly be adjusted depending on this, this pay, this cost analysis. One other area that, for our, for us to have a balanced line item budget is also a once, a five-year, one cent sales tax increase. First two years would be a one penny, and the last three, it would fall down to the other half cent. So basically, when it goes into effect, if it's approved by the council, it will be a nine-and-a-half cent sales tax, and then after two years, it will fall down to, to a nine cent, and at the sunset of the five years, then it will go back to our eight-and-a-half cent sales tax on that. After taking over the reins here, we immediately found that we were having a shortfall, our accounts payable were falling behind, and after finding out exactly where we stood on our financial ground, this is, this is the plan that we've been able to come up with, that even though it does also include a furlough day, one, one per month, or as can be adjusted per, can be adjusted per department, if it's a 24-hour department, for example. The other portion is a, is our RIF program, Reduction in Force Program, which I reluctantly have to ask us to entertain. But the, another portion of the RIF program is also tied into our retirement policy. So we do, we're, I hate that we're gonna be losing a vast amount of experience out there that is, that is a portion of this, one of the components of this, this budget that I'm presenting. Those are the main components, but now other areas that, that we have been looking into and also have already, already put into play is that we have decreased our budgeted overtime, we've reduced our tipping fees. At one point in time, residents could take a water bill out to the landfill and theoretically dump their garbage, their trash off free of charge, but in reality, the city was getting billed on that, and last year, it was $53,000 worth of tipping fees, where if we had, if the city had taken it out to the landfill, my department head said that it would probably cost the city about $3,000. We've been looking through all of our different departments, trying to streamline the departments, and that is one area that the department heads have really stepped up to the plate. Drew Peterson, for example, working with the police department, has cut out leisure services overtime just simply by having the police officers to lock and unlock gates at certain times, so that's been very, very helpful there. And besides that, I guess that's the main components. I mean, we have cut out travel and education unless it's absolutely necessary for somebody to keep a license or something along that line, but besides that, if somebody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
I think I'm gonna try to speak loud enough and just kind of let you hang on to the microphone, since I suspect that you're going to be getting a fair number of questions tonight.
Second mic, there's a second mic.
Does that work? Okay. For those of you that didn't hear, the work session's being videotaped, so I've been told that I do need to hold a microphone. So gentlemen, with that background, I guess we're at a point where the discussion questions... I'm ready to recognize Councilman Bowles.
I apologize for being late. One of my girls had a bicycle wreck when I was trying to leave the driveway, so I had to play daddy there for a few minutes and ran me behind, so I do apologize for stepping in late. Don't have that many questions. Really happy with this budget. I want to say thank you to the mayor and to the Budget Committee, Finance Committee. I know y'all have put in hours beyond hours, beyond hours, of work in this budget. Bill, I do have one question. With this doing layoffs and furloughs and tax increases and everything else we're having to do to make this work, you had one here for fireworks. How, what's, what's not in the fireworks, Bill?
Well, before I sort of answer that question directly, I'll go ahead and give you an indirect answer on that. Just recently, we had our Mardi Gras parade, and I asked the community, some sponsors and so forth, to step up to the plate, and, which we still do not have the figures in yet, but there was pretty much any overtime that would normally be occurred on the Mardi Gras parade. It looks like we're gonna be able to have the Mardi Gras parade without any overtime because of the sponsorship monies coming in. With the more direct answer to your question as far as the Fourth of July, it is a special event, I think, I don't think anybody here can deny that. It's, I thought that it was best is go ahead and leave it in there, and then I'll be working on sponsors from now to then, and hopefully, we'll have that covered. But there again, it's just like any item in this budget, just because it's in there doesn't always mean that it's going to be spent. That item could be crossed out, and then any dollars left over there can go back into the general fund.
I have another question, but I passed the mic down, I forgot it was. I was listening and looking for my next question. Here you go. I think that I'll ask again.
Thank you. Anyone next?
I know there's $240,000 in for the LPGA. I've had numerous people ask that question, why is that money in there? Could you please explain? I know why it's in there, but I'd like it on record why it's in there.
Yes, sir, that's a very easy one. It's, it's, the 240 is in there for the LPGA from last year. It's, we always pay that in the rear, so it's, even though I want to negotiate that, the LPGA program, I think, is, is at best a break-even situation for the Prattville, Prattville area. It brings a lot, brings a community together. I know I've enjoyed it, I've gone out there watching the ladies play, I've seen, I've actually caddied for some people out there, but also, after the LPGA comes, I've gone out to restaurant area and also the golf course out there, months later, and, and obviously, golfers are a little more recognizable than, than normal shoppers or so forth, and I've seen groups of 14, 16, 18 guys, and stopped and talked with them, and they'd be from Denver, Colorado, or North Carolina, and they have come down to stay in our hotel, spend lodging money, spend their food and beverage money, and, so, you know, we get a lot of advertisement for that, but I do think that it needs to be, first off, we do need a contract for that, and I do believe this ought to be negotiated.
Okay, I know, I know some of my fellow councilmen are going to be speaking, so who wants to be next? Councilman Argo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I really don't have any questions, as I had a discussion with the mayor a little earlier. Most of my, my feelings about the budget are mostly philosophical, so I, I don't want anything that I say or any questions that I may ask to come across as being adversarial or, or even being combative in any way, because that's not my purpose. My purpose is just to say, we're seven individuals on the council and the mayor, we each have our own perspectives and unique experiences, and I just have some thoughts that I want to share with my council members and my mayor, just to let them know where I'm coming from. Like each of you, you know, I find myself in a difficult situation where we're trying to piece together a budget that, that I once upon a time said was gonna be solid and sustainable, and obviously, that fell apart because we didn't have correct information. We have the correct information now, and we're working to put together a budget that is gonna be solid and sustainable, a budget that's going to, to cover our needs, and that's really where I want to start. I want to start on what our needs are, rather than trying to make sure we have a budget. As I've expressed to the mayor, and as I've expressed to members of the council in discussions and emails, I'm not aware of any rule or law that says we have to have a budget. It says we're supposed to operate from a budget, but there's no rule that says if you don't have a budget, that you're in violation of some rule or some law. And while I understand the situation that we're in financially, that it would be, it may be easier, especially for the department heads, to be able to operate from a budget, we're in extraordinary times, and I'm afraid that in our effort to make sure we have a budget, that we're not exploring some of the options that are available to us that will help us, I guess, really get down to the bottom line, and that is, what level is our budget supposed to be? The mayor has done a tremendous job in putting together a little over $33 million budget, but my question goes back to the council and to the mayor, and that is, at what level is $33 million? Is $33 million the optimum number we need to be at? Or is it 32 million? Or is it 30 million? Or is it 38 million? What is the number we need to be at in order to effectively provide services to the citizens? And unfortunately, Mr. President and Mr. Mayor, we don't, we don't have that information in front of us. We don't, we don't have a document, we don't have an individual, we don't have guidance from the League of Municipalities. The only thing we can go from is, is based on our experiences and based on the information that's provided by others in order to craft together a document from which we can work. Personally, I'm opposed to a sales tax. I still believe, right or wrong, that what we did in East Prattville is a good thing for this city long-term. I still believe that. I still believe that in order to get those stores filled in High Point, in order to remain competitive in the River Region, we need to maintain our competitive advantage at a reduced sales tax level. One of the main reasons that people from Montgomery come to Prattville to shop is a less sales tax. That is one of the reasons. It's not the only reason, but it's one of the major reasons. When we raise sales tax to nine-and-a-half percent, even if it's only for a few short years, we're erasing that competitive advantage that we had. People from Montgomery are not gonna drive over here for a half a cent. They will for a cent and a half, but not for a half a cent. I spoke to a local citizen just the other evening, who is an expert at shopping center development, and he told me, he said, "What you're about to do is, even though you're going to right your financial ship, long-term, you're going to damage your position in the River Region because you're no longer gonna have that competitive advantage." He said that when the economy begins to get even healthier than it appears to be getting now, people who are looking for recruiting stores, they're not gonna look at Prattville as quickly if we raise sales tax, because there is no competitive advantage. If we remain at our competitive advantage at eight-and-a-half cents, then stores are gonna have a reason to want to locate in Prattville, because there's gonna be that advantage. We're about to erase that as well. I'm not gonna beat a dead horse on the sales tax, I'm just gonna let, let everyone know, which they already do know, I'm opposed to the sales tax. On the wastewater fees, I understand that we are definitely in a hole when it comes to wastewater. Last year, our sewer revenue was 1.98 million dollars. That was the revenue, but our budget, what we owe and what we need to expend, was 2.4 million. So we're operating in a deficit when it comes to wastewater. We've gotta have wastewater fee increases, or there has to be an increase, doesn't necessarily have to be us. I still believe that there is an option available to us that will also help us financially with the rest of the city and with the rest of our issues, and that is, creating an authority similar to the Water Works Board, creating that authority, and giving the wastewater department to that authority, letting that authority operate the wastewater, wastewater department from the revenue that's generated. There probably is still gonna have to be a fee increase, I understand that, but if we were able to create that authority and shift wastewater to that authority, just like we do with the Water Works Board, we would appoint the water, the wastewater department board members, they would operate with the revenue that's generated. We would, we would give up, according to the mayor's budget, 2.4 million dollars that we are expecting to spend in this budget that we're about to adopt next week. 2.4 million dollars, we'd be able to divest ourselves of that money. In talking with our engineer and our wastewater people, we've got at least a $2 million price tag right now on expansions and improvements that we need to do. That's $2 million we don't have. That's gonna have to come from somewhere at some point. The wastewater fee increase is not gonna cover that. So if we were to create that authority, we would be able to not only shift that $2 million, also the 2.4 million dollars that we are going to expend, but we would not, and please don't misunderstand me when I say this about employees, those 28 employees of wastewater would go with the Water Works or the wastewater authority. They would not lose their jobs, they would still be employed, but we would have 28 employees less that we're gonna have to provide salaries and benefits for. So that's a savings. The water, the wastewater board would work independently, just like the Water Works Board does now. They would be able to tie their rates to some, whether it's the Consumer Price Index or inflation or whatever, those rates could fluctuate as necessary, and it would not be in the hands of an elected body that by its very nature has shown over the last 10 years, we're not willing to increase fees. Now, we're in a, in a situation where we've got to do that. A separate autonomous board would be able to do that. So I think that there are still some options available to us to right our financial ship, be, have a less impact on the employees who provide the services. The citizens would see practically no change in service, but again, that's just my perspective. I'm not, I'm not ready to do some of the things that we're, that we collectively believe we need to do in order to put together a budget. And I still go back to the fact that by the time we implement this budget, if it goes into effect on March 1st, it's only gonna go until September 30. We've already realized, and Lisa, pardon me if I, if I really make a mess out of the numbers, but I know that we've saved somewhere in the neighborhood of a half to three-quarters of a million dollars just in attrition. Is that fairly close? About half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars, just in attrition where employees have chosen to leave the city. We've not replaced them, we're not having to pay salaries and benefits, so I think we could expect that again. We have a retirement incentive that's been, been approved, we have long-term employees that have already indicated they're going to retire. We're gonna save that money, at least a portion of it, because they will have to be replaced in some cases. So if you really get down to the bottom line, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, I guess what I'm saying is, I realize that we're, we're in a financial crunch, and we're trying to do the best we can to fix it, but in my opinion, we're moving too quickly on major decisions that are going to impact citizens, impact employees, that there's no rule of law out there that says we've got to do this by X date. So I guess what I'm saying is, but let's slow down. Let's, let's don't enact these major decisions like a sales tax, wastewater, furloughs, terminations, because these are major decisions, and there's a gentleman who taught economics at Troy, Montgomery, that is a good friend of mine and lives in Dietzville. I called him and asked him, I said, you know, "Is there, is this a time-sensitive situation?" And he said, "No." Quite frankly, he said, "The economy is changing daily. You're, you're going to be enacting long-term fixes to a problem that is going to change daily." And he said, "I know it sounds good to say, 'Well, we can go back in and review it, we can go back in and make changes,'" but he said, "Seriously, think about what you're about to do, because politicians do not like to make major changes often, because as you can see, we're affecting the lives of the people that we are responsible for." So he said, "You need to go slow, you need to be very deliberate in what you do, and then the decisions need to match the times." And I just personally don't believe that we're in the time where we need to do some of the changes that we're about to make. And with that, Mr. President, I quit.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, and I do agree with you, Mr. Argo, I mean, because it's, we have been moving forward very rapidly. If we had really known all of the facts as we know them now and understand them now, I know these pictures behind me talking about wastewater, they would not be there. Wastewater has been neglected, the, the workers there, the city employees there, I think that they deserve, I think they deserve, I think they have earned the right to be a city employee. I mean, it's, I don't know a single one out here that's embarrassed to say that I'm a city employee. I mean, they have some great benefits, the working conditions are, until I took over office, were pretty good, but anyway, it, and I know it's been very, very hectic for them now, and I, I really take my hat off to them, because I know it's, it's been a lot of stress and, and uneasiness out there for them, because the vast majority of the city employees are great, great employees, and it, it weighs heavily on my heart about the furloughs, but, you know, Jackson Thornton has brought before us an audit that shows a lot of deficiencies that, that we need to be working forward toward, and we can't sit back, and, and if we had sat back with, if we kept going the way the, everything was going back when we passed the $37 million budget, it would, would be very devastating to everybody. There would be a lot of, a lot of people out here already laid off and so forth. We do live in difficult times now, not only here, but across the state and across the country. I don't take it lightly about this sales tax increase. I wish there was another way, and I have, I've been asking people to put something on the table, put some skin in the game, think outside the box. A lot of the city employees have done that. Once they were told to throttle back, to reduce their spending and so forth, they have, they have really done that to a point where I really don't know how to describe it. They have been excellent on that. The, and I guess we might want to call this the Prattville Water Wars, but my belief with the wastewater is we need to keep it, turn it into an enterprise fund, and Diane from Jackson Thornton can, can give us a one-on-one lesson on the enterprise funds, if you would like, but in my opinion, long-term, long-term, the enterprise fund is the way to go, because any support staff that, that the city has, that, for example, HR or IT or finance, whatever their charges are, wastewater can then in turn put cash dollars back into the coffers of the city. So, but I am, I'm not married to the, to the enterprise fund, I am married to the fact that I think we need to keep wastewater, whether we turn it enterprise fund, whatever, any other ideas that are out there, I'm open to it, but I think the wastewater employees have earned to stay city employees. I'm also, my family has a retail business, as most people here are aware, and I know that going up on the sales tax can jeopardize me personally, as well as any and all other citizens here in Prattville, but, you know, eventually, we're gonna all have to pull together, pull together as a community and say, "This is what I'm gonna do." You know, a lot of people can go right across to another area and, and save a one penny, and it isn't worth it. For me, to keep the employees that we have, I, I'm willing to pay the penny myself, but and it's definitely something that we all want to reach down in our heart and decide exactly which route we want to go. And one other thing on the budget, it is a... And one other thing on the budget, it is a, pretty much a living, breathing entity. It can be amended and adopted in any kind of ways, because as our retirees do come off the books, then hopefully anybody who has been laid off, we will be able to recall them just as soon as possible. But I know that this issue has really weighed on all of us, all of us sitting up here, all the employees, and I'm certain the citizens of the community, because this is new waters for me. I've never seen a budget repealed before. But this is, like I said before, the best I could do in the amount of time that we have had. I think that it is fair enough that we do pass a budget. We have been trying to get our different departments to be more streamlined and efficient, and I think we'd be running the city very inefficiently by not having a budget. We'll have to be bringing quite a few different items from the floor or put them on the agenda just to have banners bought for a certain parade or function or quite a few other things that I just can't think of right now. But the most inefficient way is, is don't pass the budget. The most efficient way is pass the budget. And we have saved quite a bit of money because of the hiring freeze, but the answer to your question earlier is, you know, what exactly is the dollar amount that we need to be looking at? All I can tell you is this budget that I'm presenting to you guys is off of actuals. It's based off of actuals plus the wastewater increase, plus the one cent sales tax for two years, and it goes in my five-year plan on the sales tax. I'm still willing and ready and able to listen to any and all amendments to this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming. Now, this is a real difficult time for the city of Proppel. I've been on the finance committee probably, I guess, a month, month and a half, and I've had my share of in the meantime with this. Just let me speak on the sales tax issue, first of all. Sales tax is not a popular thing. I, for one, would love not to have to go up on the sales tax. When we started this process, though, the budget proposal was looking at cutting eighty-four city employees. If any of you know the number of employees, to cut eighty-four employees from the number that we have would be detrimental to this city. And as we moved into the process further, it came down to forty, and still, it's a lot of employees. So then we looked further, tossed around the ideas of furloughs, sales tax, and wastewater. Sales tax increase may or may not produce expected revenues. I mean, it's questionable all the time. That's just, that's an if. But when you're dealing with a situation where there's a debt that has to be paid, no one else has given you anything to put on the table to come up with the revenue that we need to pay, the bond indebtedness that's come and due, then these are the types of things that we have to deal with. As far as wastewater, wastewater increase should have been done earlier and several years ago, but we did not do it. It's an absolute must that we do it now. As far as determining the direction that we need to go in, whether privatizing or keeping it, that's something that we can look at in the future, but at this particular time, those fees truly need to be adjusted and should have been adjusted several years ago. I believe that the mayor and the finance committee has truly, truly worked hard to try to bring something to the table. And as with any budget, as the mayor said, it can always be looked at. With people retiring, money being saved and benefits, we always can go back and look at it. I don't think, personally, at this particular time, that we would be doing justice to the citizens of Proppel and to this body if we don't move forward to put something in place that we think would take care of the debt that we have and to keep this city moving with the type of services that we want to give. And that's what the proposal that we have before you is gonna do. That's what we hope it's gonna do. And at any point, at any time, whether it be a council member or anyone that has an ideal, I would love to take the sales tax off the table, I mean, right now, but nothing that's been brought before us. So I'm urging the fellow members to, you know, go back and find something that you can bring, that can bring us some additional revenue, because that's what we're looking for. Just continue saving people jobs right now with the furloughs. We minimize that to probationary staff and part-time people, is that correct, Lisa? I want to make sure I'm saying the right thing. So we've worked very hard to minimize that, to keep the services and try to bring the revenue. So with that being said, Mr. Chair, I look forward to working with anybody that has something else to offer that we can present that would be not as detrimental and that will put us in a position to keep the services that citizens of Proppel deserve and pay the debt that we've incurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Councilman Ball?
Since wastewater has been brought up, I understand what a waste authority is that Dean was talking about because of the waterworks. And I've always been in favor of that. I'm a believer, if something works, follow it. But what Bill's explaining to me, I don't quite grasp and understand, because I've never seen it. I was wondering if maybe Tuesday, we could actually hold this budget two more weeks, so that way the full council, because Councilman Argo will not be available to vote on it, hold it for two weeks, so he can vote on it and have Diane Steinberg come up, maybe take thirty minutes, explain to us what the plan is, what the thought is on that, so we can wrap our head around it and everybody be really comfortable with it. But I agree that something has to be done with wastewater, and I would like to see it out of the control of politicians, because like or not, we're not perfect. And second thing is, I just want to reiterate that I can't tell you guys how many hours these men have put into this budget. You know me, I've never been happy with any budget since I've been on this board. And I'm not completely happy with this budget, but they have worked their cans off on this thing. There's a light at the end of the tunnel. I really believe in these guys, and I appreciate the amount of time that they have put into this. But I would ask that we hold it for two more weeks and then maybe have some more input on the wastewater.
I'm fine with that, but you'll have to ask Diane if she's available. I don't know if she can come up tonight.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
The decision regarding holding it will be something we would entertain at the next council meeting, so we can have that discussion at that point in time.
I'll be recognized.
I think you're an invited guest here, I'm not sure.
I do remember that, yes.
No, all kidding aside, I think that, you know, there may be some merit to that, and it certainly warrants further consideration. It may be impacted by your timing, you know, in terms of watching some of these initiatives because of the time value of these revenue generating initiatives, if they make it through to the final product. So I would just ask that we really give that mindful consideration rather than just sort of making a quick decision in that regard.
Councilman Wood?
Mayor, maybe you have to answer this question. The proposed budget that we have before us, delaying at any time, and maybe, Lisa, you may have to help him with this, I want to make sure I got my facts together. All the proposed revenue, if everything is done in the manner that we are proposing it, is based on the budget being passed on a certain day, which will be March the first or second, is that correct, Doug?
That's correct.
So the possibility of delaying it two weeks or a month, there's a possibility also of losing a certain amount of revenue.
Yes.
Councilman Argo?
Thank you, Mr. President. And before Mr. Wood leaves, I just want to say, I started my comments by saying that I was not trying to be argumentative or combative, and I'm not. But when I hear comments like, well, I want to hear somebody bring something to the table, well, I thought that's what I just did. But I'm like, I'm not gonna take that that way. But I will say this. Mr. Wood, who we all look to as the person with the most wisdom, having served the longest, said that the key word was "what we think." I want something more than what we think. I want somebody who is an expert to stand before this council and says, before you adopt these tax increases and revenue measures, and before you furlough your employees, and before you terminate probationary and part-time employees, you at least need to have a discussion of at what level do you want to provide service. We've not had that discussion. We've not had an independent audit come in and look and tell us exactly what our financial position is. I love Diane Steinheilber to death. Jackson Thornton does terrific work, but she's not been paid to do an audit of where we sit right this minute. Jackson Thornton was paid to do an audit of 2010, not where we are right this minute. We need somebody to come in and do that, and then as a collective body, we need to have a discussion that says, you need to have two garbage pickups a week. You need to have every sports program under the sun at leisure services. You need to have eighty-two sworn police officers. You need to do this. At that point, I will be comfortable at saying, yes, we need a sales tax, yes, we need wastewater. But we haven't done that. With all due respect to my council members and the hundreds of hours that y'all have put into this budget, and I applaud you for the work that you've done, I'm not critical of that work at all. All I'm saying is, for the last time, is that we have not had a discussion as a body of where do we want to be, and then match revenue to that. When we do that, then I'll be comfortable. But until then, I think that we're going down the wrong road. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. One thing I do want to say that, at this point in time, we've already implemented some changes in our accounting policies. We've changed some areas in there that will help us stay very accountable in that area. We've also been changing another area, which is, pretty soon we'll be having our procurement card program ready to go online. And then going back to Councilman Argo's comments there, I guess one good indicator, without having to pay an auditor to come in, would be, I guess, our three-point-one-million-dollar bridge loan. To me, that was a big wake-up call. I mean, that told me that we had five years to plan for it. That told me that we needed to make some adjustments. Now, to what level, you're right, we don't know exactly what that level is, but this is, but those indicators were as good as any accountant could tell me, that when you have accounts payable, that when I first sat down in the chair, were two-point-five-million That was another indicator. So it's, whereas I'm very reluctant with the sales tax, because I'm not going anywhere. This is my hometown, this is affecting me, my family, I, it's gonna probably affect these two guys right here harder than it is anybody else up here. So I'm not trying to be argumentative, just stating the facts out there as I see them. But, you know, we had, like Councilman Wood said, we're fixing to lay off eighty-something people, because one thing that you do have to do, you do have to pay your bills. And the employees deserved more than what we were giving them at that time. So this is, this is the best I can come up with at this time. One thing I will go ahead and tell you also, is I'm researching other budgets throughout the country and so forth. The budget that we do have here is not my favorite, so hopefully as we go forward, we'll come up with a different budget program, and it will be more informative, easy to navigate through, and the city can move forward as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I too express appreciation to all of those on the committee that have tirelessly worked to get us to this point where we are now, that probably there's some level of frustration to the extent that you're probably feeling like you're in the fifth overtime of some sporting event. But in reality of what I see, where we are today, is we're talking about a twelve-month budget, four months of which has actually already gone by. We can't do anything to change that. Literally in a few hours, another month will be on the books, and we'll know what actually occurred there. Therefore, in one sense, what we're actually talking about is what's gonna happen in the next seven months. And I didn't like this phrase when I first heard it, but the phrase is, no crisis should go to waste. If you use the crisis in a positive and constructive manner to become a teaching tool, then I'm in favor of using the crisis, if it can be used in that manner. I think that, for me and for this community, that we would be short-sighted if all we're looking at is the next seven months. I believe that the city needs a cash flow statement that's done on a monthly basis, and that would look out not only seven months from now, but would look out twenty-four months from that point. That the cash flow statement would show estimated and projected cash income, it would have a place to show the expenses that we anticipate and that we know that are fixed, that are going to occur. It would also have a place to put our payroll, that is my understanding, that we pay every two weeks. That results in twenty-six pay periods of a year, and if you started in year one and it fell this way, you would have an extra payroll in the first quarter and in the third quarter. The next year, you would have an extra pay period in the second quarter and the fourth quarter. So if you go in and all you're doing is comparing quarter in versus quarter in, you're going to be missing a payroll. And so my thought is that with this simple tool, it's not the be-all to end-all, but it gives us a tool in which we're looking beyond where we are today, and it provides opportunity for management, for the mayor, to look out and say, these are the projects I want to do in the future. It gives an opportunity to attempt to address some of the issues and wants and wishes and needs of the department head. needs of the department head, get them in a queue of some kind. It might not occur in the priority that each of them wish it would happen, but at least it gives everyone an opportunity to look to the future and see what opportunities that we might have. Concerning the wastewater issue, I believe that we should invest in getting a valid opinion that gives the mayor and the council options as to what could or could not be done. And I would support something of that nature. More specific to the situation with our current budget, the only comment that I've had, and to the mayor also, is that there's no comparative information. For someone new, I don't know whether these figures are higher or lower than they were last year. It would be very helpful to me to know what sacrifices have been made, what emphasis we're placing, and where we're placing that emphasis. So that concludes my comments.
I should just pass it back and forth, and whoever wants to stop and talk next. Who wants to come in? Okay, well, I have a few comments to make, and I want to say that this process has not been an easy one for any of us. And I would also echo Councilman Argo's comment that we each bring our own perspective to this effort in terms of trying to cobble together and hammer out the best approach to address the issues and the challenges as we currently perceive them. Having said that, even though the approach might be different, or, you know, how we would sort through the different options and which ones we would say, "Number one on my list, and there's no way that other one's getting on my list," I think at the end of the day, to me, it's become clear that we all do have one common goal, and that is to do our best to put a budget in place that can put the city of Prattville back on solid financial footing. And that goal, I think we all agree, is the goal. That's what the citizens deserve, is what the city deserves. And I wanted to say that even though our approach to it might be a little different, we do have that goal. And I think you're going to find it painful and a very hard thing to do for any of the individual councilmen or the mayor to even talk about having to do a reduction in force, a layoff, a furlough. I would have the same comment about a sales tax. No one likes sales taxes. And in particular, I appreciate, you know, a lot of the ripple effect. It's almost like it's, it just doesn't make sense that you're trying to hope and dream and pray that we'll start to fill our empty shopping space, and then you're going to say that, you know, out one side of your mouth and then out the other side, and you're going to talk about raising the sales tax, which I think we know could have some unintended consequences in terms of recruiting new occupants for that retail space. These, none of these are easy decisions. But at the same time, I am convinced that for us to think we're just going to kind of grow out of this problem because there are sparks of an economic recovery, I personally feel that I would be very short-sighted to take that to the bank, so to speak. I think most folks know that I'm a state employee, and we are hearing and seeing more and more, as is anybody who's looked at the headlines and the advertiser or watched the TV news, that the state is on the verge of making some very, very difficult decisions around finances and what they can continue to fund and what might not be things that they can continue in the future. Lots of stuff being discussed there, and I don't know what the final decisions will be, but you add to that what's going on in the Middle East now and the prospect for gas to go up, these are very unsettling times. And no one can really predict what is around the corner. Things change too quickly. And at the end of the day, when I step back, I have to say that the economy, whether you're talking about global, national, or on a state level or municipal level, the economy, in my view, I can't predict with any certainty. I can't predict, I have no certainty because I have no crystal ball that it's going to improve. So for us not to go ahead and look at trying to establish sound financial footing for this city, painful though some of the choices may be that undergird that, I think would be doing a disservice to the city, the citizens, and not the least of who it would be doing a disservice to is the city employees, who have to continue to live under the kind of shadow of what's next. Did the city council go far enough to fix things? Did the city council go far enough to put a sound financial plan in place? Is it perfect? No. Do I hope the economy turns around tomorrow, next month, next year, and really takes off in a sustainable, sustainable way so that we can look at this sales tax and revisit it long before two years or five years? Of course I hope that. Of course I do. All of us do. But I just have to, again, come back to my main point, is that I do not believe that this council would be doing a service to this community that I love and cherish if we did not put the pieces of this budget in place that are going to end up giving a sound financial footing. This budget doesn't accomplish everything that would be on a wish list for that sort of sound finances. It doesn't build in the creation of a reserve, which I think I mentioned in my article in the paper, the Cobb's Ford sinkhole that ended up costing us, what, about a half million dollars? A half million dollars that we had to find that money? That's the sort of thing that could be right around the corner, and we are not building a reserve right now in the budget that the mayor has proposed. And I think that's important to note, that we are on a razor-thin margin, even with these painful choices. And so when you step back from all of this, I think that, painful though they may be, these are things that we need to do as compared to waiting to see if we can't sort of grow out of this. I'm not ready to say I'm for or against a wastewater authority. I think that has some merit, whether it's within the city as an enterprise fund, an authority that's freestanding. I've not had conversations with the Water Works Board, but what I can tell you is that, as Councilman Striplin mentioned, my sense is that that's not something that is put in place overnight or that would deal, that would address some of the issues that we're facing in the remaining months of fiscal year 11, which will be finished, I think, September 30th. I don't think that we've got time to do due diligence, the research, the technical, the legal, all those underpinnings that need to be done, because when you talk about thinking things through, that's one, that's a major venture for this city that needs to be thought through in a very careful, calculated, reasoned manner. And so while that may be appropriate at some point in our future, I can't, I can't, I can't conceive of how it could be a part of addressing the issues that are facing us as we build this budget for fiscal year 2011. So I really respect the comments that we may be moving too fast in some areas, and sometimes you do want to just stop and stand back and take a breath, but at the same time, I don't think we've got a whole lot of time to waste in terms of getting our financial house in order. And I'm going to close by thanking each councilman, because I know your heart is in the right place and you've put a lot of brain power and effort. And again, I respect each one of you more than you know, and I would say the same thing. Mayor, this has not been easy for you. We've had, as you know, the changes, and you're coming into this position and learning on a fast track, so I commend you for the budget that you brought before us. And Thursday night, hearing from the citizens, which is going to be an important part of this process, may very well help us to further shape our thoughts and our views on the different components as we move forward to adopting, hopefully, this budget, whether it's at the March 2nd meeting or later. So, Councilman Reniger?
The only bad idea is one that you don't share. I shared that with a number of employees that brought outstanding ideas to me in the last two weeks, Sergeant Hill with the fire department, Kenny Rollison with vehicle maintenance, and many others. I have taken careful notes on everything that's been said tonight by my fellow council members, and I know that there are some compromises that can be made. We can implement short-term fixes like the mayor is proposing in the enterprise fund to see how well it works while we're pursuing the possibility and the complexities of creating a wastewater authority. We don't have to pass a sales tax next Tuesday. The reason that we scheduled it for next Tuesday was to give the merchants a full month to gear up on the new sales tax. If we wait two weeks and vote on any of this, it just means that there'll probably be shorter time for the vendors to gear up, or we'll lose an additional two weeks in tax revenue. But hey, there are always ways to recover that. Like all the council members up here have stated, there's not one of you that I don't want to sacrifice. I don't want to see anybody lose any time or their jobs. My God, where are you going to find a job? We don't want to let anybody off. And if there's any way possible, we won't. But right now, I just don't see it. Hopefully, tomorrow when I wake up, an epiphany will occur and everybody will be able to keep their jobs. So if you have an idea, contact me. Contact the mayor. Contact anyone up here, because the only bad idea is the one you don't share.
Thank you, Councilman Reniger. Councilman Bowles?
I would like to add one thought to what Councilman Reniger said. As one of the two business owners sitting on the board, it will take me all of one day to adjust my sales tax. I'll make 15 phone calls, spend eight hours on it. So it's not going to affect me if it's at the first of the month or midway through the month if we vote on the sales tax. And I'm not speaking for all business owners, I'm speaking for my business. And I would just like to put that out there, it's not the end of the world if we wait two more weeks. Thank you.
I'm fixing to do the going once, going twice thing. Mayor, any closing comments? Okay. I want to close then by, again, thanking the city employees, and I will tell you that you are the foundation and the bedrock and the cornerstone for this city and what makes it a preferred community. And just, I appreciate the opportunity once again to reassure you how much I respect and appreciate what you do. A reminder that Thursday at 6:00, City Hall will be the public hearing, and that will be in the, again, in the council chambers, and that will be an opportunity for the citizens to participate and share their thoughts, their views, their questions. So I look forward to seeing each of you on Thursday night. And with that, we are finished with our work session.